Okay. Will everyone please be seated so that the monitors can be polled? We can take attendance. Thank you. Precinct one. Precinct one reports fourteen present, nine absent. Precinct two. Precinct two reports ten present, eighteen absent. Precinct three. Precinct three reports nine present, eighteen absent. Precinct four. Precinct four reports nine present, fourteen absent. Precinct five. Precinct five reports sixteen present, ten absent. Precinct six. Precinct six reports thirteen present, ten absent. Precinct seven. Precinct seven reports eighteen present, eleven absent. Precinct eight. Precinct eight reports nine present, seventeen absent. At large. At large nineteen present, seven absent. And remote? Remote is three present, one absent. Yes. So we have precinct eight has ten present, sixteen absent. Having two hundred and thirty members, we have one hundred and twenty-one present, which meets the quorum of one hundred and sixteen. So the meeting is now in order. At this time, I call upon all town meeting members and anyone else present who show desires to please rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Town clerk Amy Hennessy Neves will now swear in any members who weren't sworn in the previous two town meetings. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'll just have everyone raise their right hands for me, just to make sure we have everything covered. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as town meeting members in accordance with the bylaws of the town of Milford and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts? So help you God. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Neves. Just some instructions again. Who can speak at town meeting? Town meeting members and registered voters in the town of Milford. Anyone else wishing to address this body needs the unanimous consent of the town meeting members. If you want to obtain the floor to speak or to make a motion to be recognized by the moderator, please rise in place, wave your hand, and exclaim, "Mr. Moderator," and I'll call upon you. For those participating remotely, you use the hand icon to be recognized, and Mr. George behind me will prompt me. I ask also that when you come up here to speak, or if you're speaking online, to please give your name and your precinct number or your street address, so we can verify that you are a registered voter in the town of Milford. The making and voting on motions is restricted to town meeting members. Any main motions and amendments to a motion must be in writing, and the maker of these motions must provide copies for the town clerk and the moderator. Time limits in debate. The sponsor, whether an individual or several, is allowed ten minutes for a presentation. A two-thirds vote is needed to extend a presentation for another ten-minute period. No person addressing town meeting on a motion for the first time shall speak for more than five minutes. In subsequent statements or presentations by the same person shall not exceed three minutes each nor exceed three in number. And again, a two-thirds vote is needed to extend a person's speaking time in duration or number. And lastly, with respect to debate, a speaker's concise response to a question directed to him through the moderator shall not be considered a speech for purposes of calculating the amount of time used in speaking. When it comes to voting, we'll use the same process we did the last two town meetings. We will have the remote participants vote first, and then I will call upon the body here to vote, whether it's a standing vote or a voice vote. At this time, I'll ask town clerk Neves to please read the warrant. Oh, I'm sorry. I forget that every time. If the monitors will please bring forward their attendance list. Thank you. Mr. Gatazi. Welcome to the club.
Good evening, everyone. This is the special town meeting, November fourteenth, 2022, Milford, Massachusetts, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Worcester County. To either constable of the town of Milford in said county, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Forset, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Milford, qualified by law to vote in town affairs, to meet in the upper hall of the Milford Town Hall, 52 Main Street, on the fourteenth day of November, 2022 A.D., at seven o'clock P.M. In accordance with the provisions of General Laws, Chapter Thirty-nine, Section Ten, a special town meeting shall be held in Milford's upper town hall. For those seeking reasonable accommodations under the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, due to incapacity or disability, who provide sufficient proof of such condition and who pre-register for the special town meeting at individual locations selected by such members at the time of their preregistration, as part of the reasonable accommodation process, remote participation may be permitted. Instructions for those seeking reasonable accommodations to register to participate at other locations shall be provided by the town clerk. The special town meeting will then and there act upon the following articles. Article one.
If no town meeting member objects, we will dispense with the reading of the articles. Okay, hearing no objection, Mrs. Neves will continue with the officer's return of service.
Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Worcester County, Milford, Mass., date October thirty-first, 2022. By virtue of this warrant, I have notified the legal voters of the town of Milford to meet at the times and places for the purposes within name as directed. Mark Causaloia, Constable of Milford.
Thank you, Mrs. Neves. Does the finance committee have a report?
Mr. Moderator, we do not have a report.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the meeting? Article one. Mr. Rhodes.
Here's a little-known fact. Just nine point six percent.
Mr. Rhodes, excuse me. Can you please read the motion?
Thank you very much. Article one. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town of Milford establishes establish an audit committee by inserting a new article in the town of Milford bylaws as follows. Section one, there shall be an audit committee. The select board shall appoint a committee of five persons for staggered terms of five years to be known as the Audit Committee within thirty days of enactment. The persons appointed to the by the select board shall include Milford's Finance Director, the chairman or designee of the Finance Committee, one chartered public accountant with financial audit experience who is neither a municipal employee or a special municipal employee of the town of Milford, and two persons, each with at least ten years of corporate experience, who are neither municipal employees or special municipal employees of the town of Milford. The Audit Committee shall be assisted by the town administrator and/or other employees as requested by the Audit Committee in its work. Section two. The Audit Committee shall annually develop a scope of audit services to be performed by an independent licensed public accounting firm. The Audit Committee shall develop and administer the selection process and shall recommend to the Select Board the appointment of the of an independent licensed accounting firm to conduct to conduct the annual audit. Section three. The Audit Committee, after the Select Board received the the audit report, shall review and discuss the findings with this Select Board and other elected boards and town officials as appropriate. The Audit Committee shall report to the annual meeting. The Audit Committee shall annually review the performance and independence of the audit firm and report to the Select Board. Section four. Members of the Audit Committee shall receive a compensation of one thousand dollars per year.
Motion's been made and seconded. Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Through the moderator, the finance committee recommends unfavorable on this article.
Finance committee recommendation is unfavorable. Any vote okay to be heard? Mr. Rhodes.
And again, here's a little-known fact. Just nine point six percent of Milford registered voters voted in the April 2022 election. Thank you. I once asked a town official, who should take responsibility for such a low turnout? The town official reported to me, said to me, "The voters, of course." I responded, "No, it's the government's responsibility to be sure citizens feel connected enough to vote." Good governance cannot remain merely a philosophy. Concrete steps must be taken for realizing its goals. Good governance is what makes citizens feel connected. So that's what these six articles are all about. The first two articles are not so much about an audit committee, although it says audit committee, but really, these two articles are about we taxpayers having the right to have substantial expectation that our money is being used both credibly and reliably across all town departments. The next three articles have just one objective.
Mr. Rhodes, let's confine ourselves to this one motion that you've made. Let's not delve into the other three articles. Thank you.
Thank you. Next slide, please. So the question becomes before us, why does Milford need an audit committee? At the outset, first, we taxpayers have the right to have substantial expectation that our money is being used credibly and reliably across all town departments. And second, town officials have the responsibility to prove to we taxpayers that all our tax money is being used credibly and reliably across all town departments. Is this being done now? Today, we have an accounting firm, Scanlon, that does only a partial job in proving our money is based and being used by both credibly and reliably across all departments. And let me say this, for what Scanlon is being paid to do, it does it well enough. But there's a problem with this accounting firm. According to the Massachusetts Division of Local Services, and I'm just going to read some highlights, consequently, regular external town audits can provide a powerful tool by which a community can build taxpayer confidence and government operations. Residents with appropriate work experience or professional backgrounds can also make valuable contributions. However, after this term of five years, the Financial Officers Association says, recommends a full competitive selection process and rotation of auditors after each five-year, multi-year agreement, provided that there is adequate competition among qualified auditors. Contracting with a new audit firm not only brings a fresh perspective, but it also brings good practice. The town of Milford has not changed from Scanlon in many years. When our town leaders are asked, they will say, changing the partner in charge is good enough. But really, that's not good enough. Remember, our town officials have the responsibility to credibly and reliably prove to the taxpayers that our that our money is being well-used. And that means following all the laws and the guidelines and changing every five years for fresh eyes. Next, the audit firm has only done a partial job at proving that our money is being used both credibly and reliably across all town departments. Let's look at this next very busy slide. Next slide, please. Now, I'm not going to go into detail of this slide, but let's conclude two things from this management letter. The auditor's management letter documents whether the town government can prove that our tax money is being being both credibly and reliably used. First, the letter says in part, "We do not express an opinion on the effectiveness of Milford's internal control." Second, it says, in the lower area in the last line, "However, material weaknesses may exist that have not been identified." In a more people-oriented language, what this means is with regard to our money, the audit review firm says first, "The audit review covered did not do a substantial review of all business and financial operations, systems, and controls. For example, a comprehensive audit firm would have identified that our inventory control system for Chromebooks that we purchased for the schools was deficient. A comprehensive audit firm would have overseen the implementation of an inventory management system before the horses left the barn. Had there been this control system in place, perhaps many fewer Chromebooks would have gone missing. The Milford Audit Committee, with the assistance of the expert internal auditing firm specializing in municipal finance, will do a comprehensive audit over a period of few years across all town departments. The Audit Committee will then review all operation systems and controls to determine where material weaknesses or significant deficiencies."
He has ten minutes. He still has now three, three minutes forty-five seconds. You're welcome.
Let's let's imagine for a moment that we had an audit committee in place. At that point, town government can prove that we town taxpayers have credibly and reliably used our money across all departments. This is our money. We are entitled to a substantial expectation. And there are more benefits of an audit committee, but this limited time prevents a fulsome review. Next slide, please. Here are just a few examples of towns that have audit committees. All of these committee, all of these towns have recognized the need for a comprehensive audit firm to look across their whole department. Next slide. Going on to it further, again, these towns explain to all of us, we should take great comfort in knowing that these towns have well thought about the need for an audit committee well before us, and Milford would just be catching up. Next slide, please. And finally, there are more towns. Now, if I had more slides, I could have gone and shown you twenty-five more towns that have audit committees. Milford remains only one of the very few communities, and certainly among the largest communities, without an audit firm. Next slide, please. I truly ask for your support for Article one. Good governance begins with concrete steps. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Does any other vote okay to be heard?
Moderator.
Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, Zachary Taylor, at-large member, Finance Director. I stand not to urge you to defeat this article, but rather to explain the system in place today and how it has evolved since I first started here in Milford over a decade ago. Once you have the facts of how Milford handles internal and external audits, you can make your own informed decision. At the May 2015 Annual Town Meeting, this body approved special legislation to create the Department of Municipal Finance. Once approved by the state, I became the first-ever Finance Director in this town. This important restructure of departments was recommended as an enhancement of internal controls by the external audit firm at the time. Part of the restructuring of departments was to convert two major positions from elected to appointed, the tax collector and the treasurer. Today, for the first time ever, Milford has a certified Massachusetts Municipal Treasurer, certified Massachusetts Municipal Collector, and I am a certified governmental accountant. I oversee these three major departments and develop and implement internal controls to safeguard against potential theft, fraud, mishandling of funds, and misappropriation of funds amongst other goals. I am very proud of the excellent work and performance of these departments. We all stay well-informed through various associations and state-sponsored seminars and publications. We take internal control very seriously, and we understand that the Finance Department is the first level of defense for the detection and elimination of wrongdoing. For instance, no payroll or bills are processed without first passing through the review of the town accountant's office. Unlike non-governmental units, the town must comply with many municipal finance laws. Every bill is examined to ensure proper procurement under Chapter Thirty-B. There is sufficient appropriation available. The bill is legal and lawful. Goods have been delivered and services have been rendered, et cetera. If the town accountant and finance director do not place a bill or payroll on the warrant, it does not get paid. Once compiled on a weekly warrant, the Select Board must first sign off before any checks are released. We have a similar process with payroll. All rates are tied back to collective bargaining agreements while the personnel board's wage and compensation package. We conduct periodic time-card audits and question department heads when necessary. We have denied payment for inconsistency of contract and have dealt with the grievance process. This time last year, this body approved an article to enhance time and attendance of employees. The software package is just now being rolled out and is designed to improve internal control over payroll claims and the outdated PTO process that was that was in place. Segregation of duties is strictly enforced in Milford. The treasurer and collector do not have posting rights to record any entries to the general ledger. Likewise, accounting cannot handle any funds. The treasurer has additional authentication safeguards with the various banks we do business with for transfers and other activities. No new vendor is established without first being passed through the IRS tin-matching verification to ensure is it a legal entity and for proper tax treatment. We limit cash as much as possible, and now have a penalty associated with bounced checks, which was passed by this body last year. Departments that do handle cash are backed by surty bonds that are renewed annually. We perform timely and accurate reconciliations of receivables, debt, cash, and other assets and liabilities. Any issues which do pop up from time to time, we investigate and remedy. These are just a few examples of internal controls implemented in Milford and how town employees are the first level of audit defense. The second level, in my view, is our fifteen-member Finance Committee, which is significantly more members than most communities, including many of those communities mentioned in the previous presentation. Further, many of those audit committees, quote-unquote, are extensions of the respective communities' finance committees. I have worked with many intelligent and knowledgeable people serving in that capacity over the years here in Milford, many with the same suggested experiences as written in the motion for this article. This committee is active in the community and works directly with department heads through upwards of a dozen subcommittees. This committee has investigation powers and audit powers into all financial matters. In fact, as was mentioned, in 2011, the Finance Committee sponsored Article Eight for eight thousand dollars for a specific audit of the books of the Milford Youth Center. This request was made following.
Mr. Taylor, you're going to have to wrap it up in five minutes. Thank you.
Let me quickly discuss external audits. Milford, based on the volume of debt and population.
Mr. Taylor, the five minutes are up, so you're going to have to either ask for another or you don't give people their time. So.
In closing, I believe the process in place today has been very successful. There are multiple layers of safeguards, both internal and external, which are made up of professionals from many different areas of expertise. To completely pivot and create this audit committee seems redundant and unnecessary. If I thought it was essential to seek an appropriation of a hundred thousand dollars per year, I would have called for it myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Any other vote okay to be heard? Mr. Bertorelli. Mr. Bertorelli has moved the question. It requires a two-thirds vote. It's not debatable. So at this time. Okay. At this time, the town meeting members participating remotely may now vote yes if they're in favor of moving the question, which will end debate and bring us directly to a vote on the question, or they can vote no if they want to hear more debate. All those in favor of moving the previous question will please rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. until counted by the monitors. Okay, all those opposed to moving the previous question will please rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. Precinct One.
Five in favor and three opposed.
Precinct One reports five in favor, three opposed. Precinct Two?
Seven in favor, three opposed.
Precinct Two reports seven in favor, three opposed. Precinct Three?
Four in favor, five opposed.
Precinct Three reports four in favor, five opposed. Precinct Four?
Nine in favor, two opposed.
Precinct Two report, reports nine in favor, two opposed. Precinct Five?
Eight in favor, seven opposed.
Precinct Five reports eight in favor, seven opposed. Precinct Six?
Twelve in favor, one opposed.
Precinct Six, twelve in favor, one opposed. Precinct Seven?
Seventeen in favor, one opposed.
Precinct Seven, seventeen in favor, one opposed. Did I hear correctly? Okay, one opposed, thank you. Precinct Eight?
Six in favor, four opposed.
Precinct Eight, six in favor, four opposed. At-large?
Thirteen in favor, two opposed.
At-large, thirteen in favor, two opposed. And remote is one in favor, two opposed. Eighty-two having voted in the affirmative, thirty opposed. The necessary two-thirds has been met, and the motion is carried. Uh, all those in favor will have, uh, the remote, I mean, excuse me, the town meeting members, uh, participating remotely, if you're in favor of the main motion, which is to establish an audit committee, uh, if you're in favor of establishing the audit committee, you will please vote yes. If you're opposed, no. All those in favor of establishing an audit committee will please, uh, vote aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Nobody's voted yet. Can the, uh, remote participa, participants please vote now. Yes if you're in favor, no if you're opposed. Well, in any event, the- Okay, anyway, the, the motion is defeated. Uh, Article Two.
Mr. Moderator, I move that we pass over to-
Okay, I, I believe Mr. Rhodes was gonna pass over Article Two. Uh, but motions been made and seconded to pass over Article Two. It's intent to take no action on the article as inserted in the warrant. It is debatable. Does any voter care to be heard on the motion to pass over? If not, the question comes upon the motion to pass over. All those, uh, town meeting members participating remotely will now vote yes if they're in favor of passing over, and no if they're opposed to passing over. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion is carried. Article Three.
Ladies and gentlemen, excuse me, Mr. Moderator, I move that the town of Milford amends Article One of the general bylaws of the town of Milford entitled Annual Town Meeting by striking the words "First Tuesday in April" and inserting the words in their place instead "Third Tuesday in May."
Motion's been made and seconded. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends to refer to sponsor.
Finance Committee recommendation is refer to sponsor. Any vote okay to be heard? Mr. Rhodes?
Ladies and gentlemen, um, I want to clarify one thing from the beginning. Uh, while it is said, while it says "Annual Town Meeting," that's the title of that paragraph, but this refers to the election, the town election to be moved from the, from the first Tuesday in April to the third Tuesday in May. It's the town, it's the town election, not the town meeting. Most important to understand. Mr. Moderator, I offer this, I offer this motion, along with two other motions, to hopefully increase- Uh, can I have the next slide, please?
Thank you.
Thank you. The idea to increase significantly the very low voter turnout that Milford has had. It's incumbent upon us to improve this. What people say about it, the potential problem with low voter turnout, is that the government may be more responsive to citizens who regularly vote. Elected officials are motivated by a desire to be reelected, so they have an incentive to follow the preferences of voters. This can lead to a bias in the legislation that is passed. This is part of a very long article, or a long, um, document by Dr. Sizmar. Um, next slide, please. So there we are, ladies and gentlemen. Let me give you a minute to just take a look at that. So back, 2017, seventeen percent. 2018, eighteen percent, begins to trail off. 2020 was high because it was a national election. And this most recent was 9.6 percent. Certainly nothing that this town can be proud of. I believe, now, there are a lot of reasons why people don't vote, and I've looked at many of them, but one of the reason is the weather in which, um, the vote occurs. May I have the next slide, please? So, cold weather in April makes residents reluctant to vote. Moving to the third will be warmer. Many, many residents lack awareness, and I meant to say town election, we must do a better job at informing. Our annual town election occurs before the town meeting. Incumbents do not have to defend their votes. We have many uncontested elections, again, decreasing the, our, the turnout for our elections. Voter apathy, people can't get to the polls, loss of faith, things we can't do about right now, but we can take a concrete step to moving to good governance. These are towns, just some of the towns. Most, every town in the Commonwealth has their election in either May or June. We remain one of the very few towns that has our election in April. And as one person who went out and did my election, election campaigning, it's very cold to do it in January and February, and it's discouraging to others to take up nomination papers. And if any of you can recall from last year, last year we had snow on the ground until mid-March. Without, no one could have done any campaigning. So that's why these towns, and again, many others, have moved their elections to May and June. Next slide, please. So again, as the first of three articles concerning, hopefully to increase this 9.6 percent that I know everybody in this room wants to do, no one can be satisfied that, with that, I please urge you to support Article Three. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Any other vote okay to be heard? Mr. Viscanti.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, Mike Viscanti, town meeting member from Precinct Eight. This is the single most important change to increase voter turnout that we have had. Not only will it increase voter turnout, but it will also encourage more candidates to put their name out there. Please vote yes on this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Viscanti. Any other vote okay to be heard?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Johansson.
Andrew Johansson, Precinct Four. Uh, Mr. Moderator, I've actually had, personally had experience, um, campaigning in town elections, um, in, there was one April where, uh, the, the chill and the cold is brutal. And that, this, this proposal to move the town elections to May, I do believe would greatly encourage voter turnout, as well as participation, and I would urge its passage. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johansson. Any other vote okay to be heard?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Chris Moore in Precinct Five. Town meeting members, I don't know if being warmer is going to change our voter turnout. All I know is 9.6 percent is not an acceptable rate. I think that we need to do something. Are we grasping at straws here? Possibly. Can it hurt? 9.6 percent says it can't hurt. I've stood out with people. I know that the people on this board have sat over, sat outside and been a little too chilly. I know a lot of people in this building have done that. Does this solve the problem because it's gonna be warmer? I don't know. But all I know is 9.6 percent is not an acceptable rate, and it's nothing that I'm happy with. We need to get more people out to vote. Is this the first step? Is this the tenth step? Is this the twentieth step? I don't know. But I agree that we need to try something, because 9.6 percent is an unacceptable number. I think warmer temperatures, I agree. When you watch the weather forecast on Voter Day on Tuesday, they talked about it goes up point-three percent every degree. Obviously, I'm not saying that that's factual, but the point is, we need to try something. 9.6 percent is an unacceptable number. We need to hear from our voters. We need to hear what they say, because all of us in this room, we serve them. And I think that we need to try something. Is this the solution? I'm not saying it is. And I'm not saying that there aren't gonna be other steps after this. Let's try it. If it doesn't work, we can have another town meeting, move it back to April. But the point is, I think we owe it a duty to our town members to try something. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Does any other vote okay to be heard? Mr. Murray. Excuse me, Attorney Murray.
Brian Murray, twenty-three Congress Terrace. Um, the, the only thing that I think I would ask folks to think about in terms of voting on this particular article is, you know, the election itself does not happen in a vacuum. It's part of the overall town governance. And your annual town meeting, our annual town meeting, is the third Monday in May. So now what you're doing is, you're, you're converging the election and the annual town meeting to come together, bringing together the, um, currents of, uh, political campaigning, which I know the chairman on FinCom has called silly season on many occasion, along with the governance of the town, which is extremely important. So to me, the operation of the government is like an interlocking machine, and you ought not to change one piece without considering how it's gonna change the other piece. When you look at those other towns that, that have town meetings in May, I venture to say their town meet, uh, their, I'm sorry, their elections in May, their town meetings are typically in June or sometime away from the election. It was always told to me, when I first got involved with town meeting and in government, that the idea was to get the elections done in April, get all the political decisions out of the way, considerations out of the way. Then you had April and May to prepare for what was really important, govern the town at town meeting, and make decisions clear based on what's in the best interest of the town and not what might be a political consideration. Um, I think it's significant in this particular presentation that we don't get to see the voter turnouts on some of these other towns. I don't think that they would say that, uh, having an election in May is a panacea for seventy-five percent participation. I think a lot of these communities are suffering the same thing that we are in terms of, of voter apathy. That's a whole other discussion. But I think to take one part of the town operation without considering how it interacts with a very important part is a very dangerous activity, particularly without a level of, um, information that, that it would make a difference. It would really seem to me, uh, a more pragmatic and, I think, prudent way to go would be to step something like this back, maybe appoint a commission to look at some of the reasons that, that, you know, the previous speaker had indicated, you know, why we're having problems with, with folks voting, and really come back with a comprehensive plan that looks at the town governance, um, fully and, and completely. But, uh, you know, putting the election the day after the annual town meeting, um, it, it really needs some thought. It, it really does, and, um, it's, it's not one that I would be particularly in favor of.
Thank you, Attorney Murray. We'll now recognize, uh, town, remote town meeting member, Attorney Wilton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Lauren Wilton, Precinct Five. Um, I normally agree with Brian Murray, and I, I, I do in theory here, but as somebody who, um, has campaigned, um, going door-to-door asking for signatures when I ran for a town meeting, as someone who's canvassed, um, and also held signed standouts, and also stood outside the precinct all day on Election Day, I can tell you that, uh, weather, um, is, is a consideration, not just as to whether or not people vote, but as to the people who are, you know, actively involved in the political process. And so I think it's important to consider that, um, because, you know, the signage and all of that, it, it helps people who maybe are not that well-informed be informed. And I'm not really very concerned about the political impact that it would have on town meeting. I think town meeting members know the deal. They're the most active political people in, in the town. And so I, I appreciate what was just said by the previous speaker, but I still support this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Wilton. Attorney Olafman?
Town meeting members, the, the year the gentleman cited in which the lodges vote, and he said it was because it was a national election, it wasn't. It was a town election. And it was during COVID, and I was one of the candidates. So if we want to talk weather, yes, by the time I get to June, because it was extended, 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 this Irish skin was bright red by the end of the day. So the weather wasn't favorable to me. So it's not always weather. Let's think about this. Put in the true perspective across the country. Put in the true perspective across the country. Why do we have vote early? Why do we have vote by mail? Because we're trying to draw voters in. We're trying to entice them to meet their civic duty, to do the right thing in the best interest of their community, their state, their nation. And it's across the country. It's not just Milford. So the numbers are the numbers. You go into the cities and they're offering them gift cards to come on down, you know, and get a vaccination, then go vote early. Well, it's an enticement to come on down. They've tried everything they can. You know, there's articles that are going to come up later, oh, we ought to spend money to encourage people. How much more can we do? We send out to people and say, please, come and vote. Meet your civic duty. You can vote by mail. You don't even have to leave your house. You don't have to worry about the weather. You can come here to Town Hall. There day and night, and you have the opportunity to vote. You don't have to, as we did for years and years and years, those of us young people, you know, go on that one day between these hours. I agree with Brian Murray. I think we're backing things up. We're going to push things into holidays. We're going to push things into the summer months when kids are getting out of school. Who wants to be sitting here in the middle of June? Schools are closed. Kids are going on vacation. Parents aren't going to be here. You want to talk about voter apathy? You won't have a quorum here because they already had the long school year. We're coming out of COVID. People are still winding back up. They're trying to get better. And it's just, it's not getting as good as any of us would like, but it is better. I'd ask that you defeat this and that we come back and take another look at it. I don't know that this is the answer. I really don't. If this was an article that said, hey, let everyone vote by mail, all right, I don't think the results are going to be much different. Because you can send the ballots out, if they don't fill them out and send them back, they didn't vote. And I don't mean to be the curmudgeon on things. I'm simply saying, how do you get people to vote? You show them that their vote counts. And this doesn't do that. This doesn't do that. So I would ask you to defeat this because I just don't see that it's going to change anything. I think it's going to get worse because I don't think people are going to show up.
Thank you, Attorney Olafman. Any other vote to care to be heard? Ms. Mastriani.
Catherine Mastriani, Precinct Three. May I direct a question for clarification to the town clerk?
Yes, go ahead.
Mrs. Neves, could you please clarify? My understanding is that the Vote Act that passed that allowed early voting and mail-in voting doesn't apply to town elections was my first question. And the second question is, was the 30% vote that the town election achieved during COVID, weren't we allowed mail-in ballots for that one election? Those are my questions. Thank you.
Currently, the state doesn't allow early voting for the local elections, and the turnout was higher because of early voting during COVID.
Thank you. Does any other vote to care to be heard? Mr. Moderator. I've got the member in Precinct, I don't know, is that six? Thank you.
Jennifer Parsons, Precinct Six. One thing that I just wanted to point out is that I did prepare for tonight's town meeting by reading the literature that was sent to my home. And as Mr. Rhodes pointed out this evening, there was an error in that literature, and my preparation was spent thinking about the annual town meeting, not the annual election. And had I thought that the question was in reference to the annual election, I would have done more homework in terms of finding out what kind of impact changing the election would have. I would have referred to our select board. I would refer to our town clerk. I would have referred to people who would have been able to give me a better picture of what kind of impact changing the election date really would have. I have no problem with revisiting the idea of shifting the election. That may very well help us. It may not. I don't know the answer to that. But as someone also who has served this town in an elected position and gone through three different elections, I don't recall receiving a survey. I don't recall anyone asking me for any input as someone who is both a voter and an elected school committee member in this town. So I do think it would bear gathering more data, as Attorney Murray mentioned and others have mentioned as well, before we decide if this is the move that makes the most sense for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Parsons. Any other vote to care to be heard? Precinct Moderator. Way in the back, Precinct Eight, I believe.
Nick Cusworth, Precinct Eight. First off, I would like to just address a couple of statements made by previous members up here, that I believe there is a level of cynicism when it comes to believing that nothing can be done, basically, to change the voter participation here. One thing might not fix it, so let's not try anything. That's the general sense we get. Or let's push it off. Let's study it more. Let's form a commission. These are basically low-hanging fruit that we're talking about. I don't think that moving the election date is going to make a huge difference on its own, but I don't think it's going to drastically hurt anything. I think we need to consider a whole range of options. I think we need to consider, as we will later, how we present signage in the community, how we advertise the election. We don't send out anything in the way of mailers, any voter information to members of the community. The reason that people do not get invested in local politics is because it is an opaque process that most people don't, either don't understand or don't see connects to their own lives. So whose fault is it that they're not getting involved? I don't think the answer is to blame the voter, essentially, and say, oh, they're not going to come out. Doesn't matter if it's warmer weather. Doesn't matter if we do this. They're not going to come out. I think that is cynical. I think that is reductive, and I think it's wrong. So I would vote, I would encourage you all to vote yes for this, and I would encourage you all to consider the other articles that we have here and to continue this conversation because it's an important one. Milford is not the only community that faces this, but that doesn't mean that we can't make changes that will positively impact our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cusworth. Any other vote to care to be heard? Hold on, Mr. Caligoni. And I'll get to the voter in Precinct Seven and then Mr. Moore.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. Angelo Caligoni, Precinct Six. Voting apathy is obviously a problem not just in Milford, Massachusetts, as previously stated, it's the entire country. Actually, our legislature, state legislature in Massachusetts and all over the country has done things about it. It involves civics, the old class of civics. Sometimes a page of history is worth more than a ball of logic. How did this come about? After World War II, we were standing pretty high, the only country that had a strong bonds. And we were riding very high, and so wasn't one of our partners in World War II Russia. But they were spreading communism. We were spreading democracy. It wasn't even the end, and Russia had already conquered Japan's goings in Manchuria and Burma. And finally, October 3rd, 1957, Sputnik went up in the air. That shocked the conscience of an entire country. President Eisenhower actually urged everyone to have four certain subjects to catch up with Russia, the STEM subjects, science, technology, electronics, and mathematics. And in doing so, schools adopted that. He offered a lot of money to different towns and states if they would start these four different types of subjects. And what subjects were given up? Civics. Civics declined all over the country, and no one knows that better than myself. In 1967, I started teaching in Milford in social studies, and it was one class of civics in all history classes. We took, we got the kids interested in current events, and we had them look at the different towns, townspeople running for office one year, and we had them vote on the town meeting class. After the election, we asked the kids in school, in my class, how'd you like the election, kids? And one girl raised her hand and said, Mr. Cal, I felt bad for this one person. What person? He ran for every office and lost. Who was his name? Mr. Blanks. Now, that should tell a lot of us, all the members here, to tell me what that actually means. They didn't know what was going on. So we started to reinstitute civics. And just lately, three years ago, our legislature has put forth requirements that certain projects be conducted in the eighth grade and in high school as well. It's required by the Department of Ed, and hopefully that will, that will give this future generation coming up and knowing more about who's running for office, who's not running for office, what are the issues. We even had, in the eighth grade, we used to have like lockdown meetings. We had the students actually survey the whole town, and they would make their own warrants up, and they would argue with. And they had fun doing it, too. And hopefully, they're going to do that in the very near future, too. I'm trying to get that done in our school system this very year. Maybe that will happen. But the ground has been laid for more people voting. It's going to start at the base level at the schools, when the kids, you've got to get them interested in what's going on. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Caligoni. The voter in Precinct Seven.
James Buckley, Precinct Seven. I'm somewhat in favor of this, but I'm going to be voting against it for a couple of reasons. One, I'd love for it to be moved. I hated trying to get signatures in January and February, trying to go to my neighbor's house. Hopefully, they shoveled to be able to knock on their door. Hopefully, they would open their door, let the cold air to come in for me to sign my election form to say, hey, I want to run for my precinct to be a town meeting member. So having that pushed back, I'm sure it'd mean the signatures would be pushed back, which would be a wonderful thing. We can get more people involved, and we'd have less Mr. Blanks for town meeting members. That'd be a wonderful thing. But I do agree with Attorney Murray that this is lacking because I can just imagine what goes into a town meeting. I know for me, I get the paperwork. I got a letter even today from the, you know, I got a letter today coming in the mail. I came in the house, here's a letter about one of the articles coming up later. Didn't even have a chance to read it yet. Last week, we got a letter from the selectmen about one of the articles coming up. To have the town meeting right up against even a week or two within a town of election is kind of crazy. The amount of work that they have to do in the town to get the elections going for people holding signs, people running for office, they're not going to be putting forth their effort to work for the town meeting. So that, I think we would have to change our dates, change the dates of the town meeting. That would have to be in this amendment, or this article here would be, we're changing this date, and we're changing this date. Second Tuesday of May is when the election is. Second Tuesday of June is a town meeting member, to give us a month to prepare. And like one of the previous speakers, when I was at home reading this, I'm like, okay, we're going to move the town meeting to May. I'm thinking to myself, isn't it already in May? But okay, we'll move it to the third Tuesday in May. That's great, not realizing that we're talking about the town elections. So I, too, was unprepared with trying to run numbers and trying to run everything. So for this point, I'm just saying, yeah, we got to vote no for this now, come back to it, get everything in a row, properly present it, and then we go from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members. Chris Moore in Precinct Five. I didn't state all the facts previously because I think all of you, just like me, want to try to get this over with. So I did not come out all guns blazing because to me, I thought this was a no-brainer. It is of no cost to the town whatsoever to move the election. The way the election is working right now obviously is not working, and I'm not saying that we're different than every other community. Town meeting is not being moved. I know that some of you may be confused from previous speakers or whatever. There was no intention whatsoever of moving town meeting. The only advantage that you're going to get, which is a huge one, is the fact that you're not going to get two, possibly sometimes three, school committee members that are going to come in and vote on a 60-plus million-dollar budget with five weeks' notice. So I hear a speaker say that they've been a town meeting member, and they currently sit here and they weren't prepared for this meeting. We are now going to have a brand-new, and possibly three, brand-new school committee members that are going to vote on a $60 million budget in five weeks. Because that's what you're doing by having that. And let me tell you right now, I've sat on this finance committee a long time. I was chairman for a long time. I still don't fully understand the school budget. When you have an election in April to put in new school committee members, new finance committee members, excuse me, not finance committee, town meeting members, I apologize, and have them vote on both a 60-plus million-dollar budget with five weeks' notice, and town meeting members with five weeks' notice vote on a $130 million budget with five weeks' notice. By moving the election to May and not moving town meeting, which there was never an intention of moving town meeting, you now give every individual, whether it's a new, and I keep using school committee because obviously they're a huge portion of our budget, as well as town meeting members, you give them almost 11 months to absorb the information that they're given before they have to have a tangible vote at town meeting. Our representative made fantastic points, and I can't argue with him. Get in an argument with a lawyer, you're going to lose every time. And he's a smart one, too, so that's even worse. But the point is, it does nothing to hurt this town both financially and decision-wise. To me, when you look at this, all you gain is the fact that you are now giving both our committee members and our town meeting members 11 months to learn about the finances of Milford before they vote on it.
Okay, Mr. Moore, you're going to have to wrap it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator.
Mr. Bur.
I move the question.
Mr. Bertorelli has moved the question. It's an attempt to shut off debate. It is not debatable, requires a two-thirds vote. We'll have to prepare the slide. Okay, all town meeting members participating remotely will now vote yes if they're in favor of moving the previous question and no if they are opposed to it. All those in favor will please rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. All those. All those opposed to moving the previous question will please rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. Okay. Precinct one.
Seven in favor, one opposed.
Precinct one, seven in favor, one opposed. Precinct two.
Ten in favor, zero opposed.
Precinct two, ten in favor, zero opposed. Precinct three. Precinct three, six in favor, three opposed. Precinct four.
Precinct four, eleven in favor, zero opposed.
Precinct four, eleven in favor, zero opposed. Precinct five.
Fifteen in favor, one opposed.
Precinct five, fifteen in favor, one opposed. Precinct six.
Ten in favor, three opposed.
Precinct six, ten in favor, three opposed. Precinct seven.
Nineteen in favor and not opposed.
Precinct seven, nineteen in favor, zero opposed. Precinct eight. Precinct eight, sixteen in favor, one opposed. At-large.
Sixteen in favor, not opposed.
Sixteen in favor, zero opposed. For at-large and remote is two in favor, one opposed. Hundred and twelve having voted in affirmative, ten opposed. Necessary two-thirds has been acquired and the motion to move the previous question is carried. All those in favor. Excuse me. Oh, yeah, we need a- Okay. Town meeting members participating remotely may now vote yes if they're in favor of amending Article One of the general bylaws and no if they're opposed. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
Motion is defeated. Article four.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the son of 2.5 million said sum to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Milford Geriatric Authority for purposes of supplementing the operated budget and expenses of said authority.
Motion's been made and seconded. Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Through the moderator, the finance committee recommends favorable.
Finance committee recommendation is favorable. Any vote of care to be heard?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Consigli.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, this article, of course, is probably one of the most difficult articles that we, as a countryside healthcare facility, really need to do and must do. The overhead slides real briefly, and we'll scan through them real quickly, just gives you an overview of countryside healthcare. Chris, you can keep going. The overview, as you can see, the building itself is on about 7.39 acres. Keep going, Chris, please. Another overview shows that the town of Milford's land of 53 acres is to the right on this picture. The parking lot's on 2.39 acres of countryside. And then the Milford has their leaf dump, which is another 33 acres on the other side. Go ahead, Chris. Another overview of the 7.3 acre site. Again, the parking lot site at 2.39 acres. And again, that is the town of Milford's land and back of the facility, about 53 acres. And again, the next slide. And Chris will continue to utilize these slides until we get to the financial arm and then I'll ask him to hold. In the meantime, for the, for time, I'd like to get through this presentation. A little background real quickly. Back in '06, this body approved an article to borrow and bond and construct a state-of-the-art new construction and renovation of this facility. Then in 2018, we added, at the request of many, 28 dementia bed wing, discarding the old four-to-sick beds' wings that currently the state and the soldier's home had faced during COVID. Today's countryside's building is well-known as a top-notch and clean long-term, short-term, and rehab facility with referrals from all local hospitals. Department of Public Health guidelines today is a model that countryside has. And the older generation of the nursing homes are now going by the wayside. Countryside was always ahead of the curve. The Board of Trustees, members Barbara Oger, Dr. Joe Lopes, Edward Bertorelli, Attorney George Holland, Dino DiMatteis, Phyllis Mccoly, and many other past members, Fran Small, John Betcher, and many, many more before me. It's interesting to see that we can come into this community as children, go through the elementary school, the middle school, the high school, and then we shoot over to the, to the youth center. We have police. We have fire. We have a waste treatment plant and we have a water company. And it's all backed and supported by this community. And then we also have the senior center. After the senior center, you have countryside. But countryside has to try and be self-dustaining on their own. Well, COVID changed it. COVID changed it. In any world crisis, heroes seem to just appear. Well, when the state required mandates to freeze admissions to facilities and close those admittance for close to two years, including hospitals, because we had to deal with the COVIDs, that many had been exposed or infected and we ended up actually closing down a full wing so we could control our own patients and staffs in case we needed to quarantine then. During this entire timeframe, it was the heroes. It was the heroes. The administration, the nursing staff, the aides, and even family members that could not go near the building. It was a nightmare. Police and fire and the hospital, all struggling just to get through a day. Yes, we had those heroes. To this day, we still have those heroes. For over 100 years, the Geriatric Authority in Milford and countryside has taken care of hundreds, if not thousands, of residents, including their extended families, providing quality, long-term rehab care and services. Many of you in this room have either been there, have had family members there, or know of loved ones that were there. But as I indicated, the COVID crisis really took its toll. Even today, it has forced the shutdown of over 21 nursing homes. We were trying to stay ahead of the curve. We did obtain the PPP loans twice. We were the beneficial of an ARPA funding as well. And we came back to this town meeting for additional help as we still tried to get through the mess. These challenges include rising costs and unprecedented inflation, the Department of Public Health mandates, inadequate reimbursement funding, and the all, the all-in encompassing and still active acute staffing shortages. We now have more room. We're now back open. Matter of fact, we were one of the first homes that brought back the rehab side again. Some others in this community couldn't even open it up. But we're back and we're staffed. Can we fit more? Yes, we can. We need just more staffing. And that is the crisis. It's similar to what has happened when the real estate crashes. If you remember, and I'll make this very briefly, I've been doing commercial real estate and development for over 30 years. Commercial real estate back in one of the last crashes lost 50% of value. Condominiums lost 50% of value. Took four years to recover from that. Single-family residential values, 30 to 37%. Took a year and a half for that to recover once we came back online. We are back online. We are looking for this community to support the families and the elders beyond after we're out of the senior center. I was an eight-year-old child when my father took me to countryside when it was the porfong. And my grandfather died there. And I had the benefit of meeting my father there after Brigham and Women's Hospital when he was passing. To bring my family members to Brigham's, to see him, is a difficult ride for any person, any elder, any family member that's trying to see a loved one. If we don't get through this, you're going to be traveling 75 miles away to a facility that may be not even close to what you have in this community, the gem that we currently have. So the article is twofold. This one is to help fund. The second one is to give us the authority to continue to investigate the medical side values of these facilities. Because as they all close, we're hoping to get the staffing that we continue to need. And the hospitals are in the same boat. When a nurse is being paid $275,000 for a four-month stay in Alaska, it's kind of tough to get that nurse to work a countryside. So it will turn itself like any other market does. But the medical facility, the medical field, and these facilities have been crushed by COVID. Only the people can make them live again. Only this body can keep this pride and joy in this community. And with that, I'd like to ask Phil Simcoly to come up and kind of go over and bear with us for the financial aspect of this. Phil?
Yes, Mr. Sir Mccoly. We're going to have to take a vote here. We got, pretty much used up the 10-minute presentation time. So I need a motion, please, to give the sponsors another 10 minutes.
Motion.
Motion's been made by Mr. Moore to give the sponsors an additional 10 minutes. Okay, we're going to pull up a slide. It's a two-thirds vote that's required. So if you'll bear with us for a second. Okay, so all those in favor who are participating remotely, town meeting members may now vote yes if you want to extend the sponsor's presentation for additional 10 minutes, no if you're opposed. All those in favor will please rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. It's not a voice vote. Sorry. All those opposed to extending the time additional 10 minutes will rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. Precinct one.
Seven in favor, one opposed.
Precinct one, seven in favor, one opposed. Precinct two.
Ten in favor, zero opposed.
Precinct two, seven in favor, zero opposed. Precinct three.
Precinct three, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Precinct three, nine in favor, zero opposed. Precinct four.
Ten in favor, zero opposed.
Precinct four, ten in favor, zero opposed. Precinct five.
Sixteen in favor, zero opposed.
Precinct five, sixteen in favor, zero opposed. Precinct six.
Thirteen in favor, zero opposed.
Precinct six, thirteen in favor, zero opposed. Precinct seven.
Nineteen in favor, not opposed.
Precinct seven, nineteen in favor, zero opposed. Precinct eight.
Eleven in favor, one opposed.
Precinct eight, eleven in favor, one opposed. At-large.
Sixteen in favor, not opposed.
At-large, sixteen in favor, zero opposed. And remote is three in favor, zero opposed. Two. Okay. 111 having voted in favor to oppose, necessary two-thirds has acquired and the motion is carried. Mr. Where'd he go? Sir Mccoly, you have 10 minutes for the second part of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, ladies and gentlemen. You found a handout on your seat earlier. We will review the handout. I want to focus on the financial information as well as some census information. Looking at the cover sheet, and I'll give you a minute to get the handout. Countryside has 109 patient beds. 51 are in long-term acute, 28 are in memory, and 30 are in short-term rehab. The, the, in short-term rehab, you know, we treat falls, fractures, respiratory issues, COPD, cardiac issues, orthopedic issues with other comorbidities. The reimbursement between long-term and short-term is very, very different. In long-term, we are reimbursed by Mass Health. And the reimbursement there is very low, some $200 to $300 less per patient day than short-term rehab. In short-term rehab, we get Medicare and the commercial payers. We've got Blue Cross, Harvard Pilgrim, et cetera. So I want to make that point. When you look at some of this analysis, you know, the short-term rehab is very important to the facility. It's supported the facility for a number of years, offsetting the loss that we incur on the long-term side, which is again, long-term acute and memory. Okay? Go on to page two. Now you'll see some financial information there. And across the top, those are audited financial statements, operating profit and loss. If you look at 2018, we made $136,000. So at one point in time, countryside was profitable. If you look at 2019, slight loss, $174,000. If you look at 2020 and 2021, as Mr. Consigly stated, those were the COVID years. And we did receive tremendous stimulus money. We received $4.8 million from federal government and through October, 1.7 from the town. And what we did, we backed out the miscellaneous income or extraordinary funds from the financial statement loss. And we look at the bottom and you'll see a loss, a profit or loss without funds. So again, 2018, no funding, 2019, no funding, same number, 136, 174. Our operating loss, if we didn't have federal funding in 2020, would have been some 2.2 million. Our operating loss in 20- Our operating loss in 2021, again, without funding, would have been two-point-eight million. Year-to-date through October, we are running at one-point-nine million. Now, October of 2022, in the first four months, while COVID was still pretty active, our loss per month, first four months of 2022, was two-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand. Our average loss for the last six months was some hundred-and-fifty-two thousand. So, we made progress. Are we there yet? No. But we made progress. Again, first four months, the average loss was two-fifty-seven. The last six months, the average loss was one-fifty-two. Okay? Going over to page two. This is census data. And again, you know, the total census is a hundred and nine. So, keep that in mind when you look at this. So, at 2018, you can see, you know, our average census for the year was a hundred. And again, if you think back, in 2018, we were profitable. If you look at 2019, again, the average census, again, the last column, was a hundred, and we had a slight loss. Now, if you look at 2020 and 2021, now, COVID really started in April of 2021. And if you look at the drop-off in the census numbers, again, the hospitals were just consumed with treating COVID patients. There were no electives, there were very few other procedures. So, rehab, as Mr. Consigli mentioned, was really closed for almost two years. So, if you look at the census numbers, you'll see eighty-seven, seventy, look at 2020 now, eighty-seven, seventy-two, seventy, seventy-four, eighty-two? Need glasses. Seventy-six, eighty, et cetera. And you can just see the drop-off. So, the average census in 2020 was eighty-three. The average census in 2021 was eighty. And in 2022, again, COVID really had really a two-year range. And it, you know, we were still during COVID during the first three months, three or four months of 2022. And you can see how our volume is picking up. If you look at April, it was a twenty, ninety, I mean, it's ninety, it was a ninety-four, eighty-nine, ninety-four, ninety-six, ninety-four, ninety-four. So, clearly, we made some progress. Hmm? Yeah. Yeah. And our current census today is actually ninety-eight. Okay? Turning to the next page. Again, this is short-term rehab. So, we're distinguishing long-term from short-term. If you look at short-term rehab, 2018, the average, again, the very last column, the average per month was some twenty-three patients per month, okay, per day. 2019, it was twenty. Now, again, in 2018, we were profitable, and 2019, we're slight loss. And again, the rehab numbers on a per-day basis were twenty-three almost and twenty. If you look at, again, 2020 and 2021, rehab was, again, practically closed. I mean, you know, we had some months where we had, like, two patients. And the reason you see any numbers there at all, because if we had a COVID patient in the acute or memory unit, and they needed rehab, we could actually transfer them to the rehab unit, because the rehab unit was a quarantine COVID unit. So, the only reason why you see any numbers at all for rehab is because if a patient, again, had COVID, they went to the rehab unit, because that was our quarantine unit. Okay? In terms of where we're going, you know, we have to, we have to increase our volume. I mean, you know, in terms of, you know, total census, you know, I mentioned a hundred, we probably need a hundred-and-three, a hundred-and-four. If we look at rehab, and again, rehab drives the machine, we need twenty-five and twenty-six in rehab. So, again, we're getting there, not there yet. The issue really is staffing. I'm sure many of you saw the article in the Daily News on Sunday, talking about nursing shortages. Every nursing home in the state is experiencing shortages. You know, we've been able to recruit, so we've been able to add staff, but the impediment to volume, okay, is really staff. And even, you know, we're going out and we're paying for agency help, which on average is fifty percent more than our regular staff. So, you know, what's the answer to that question? Everyone's experienced an issue with staffing. You know, we have a very good model at Countryside. Really, a very good model. We have a lot of dedicated and long-term employees who really care about the place, who create a very positive environment for their colleagues. We have a very neat and clean facility. We have competitive salaries. Staffing ratios are reasonable. So, we present a very strong model in terms of future recruitment. On the volume side, you know, acute and memory have been at a capacity for years. They've always been at that capacity. But again, most of those patients in those units are Mass Health patients, and the reimbursement is below our cost. Okay? On the rehab side, you know, we have an excellent reputation with the area medical staff, you know, with our hospital. I think the Countryside is clearly valued. So, as we get staff, I think we feel comfortable.
Mr. Moderator, time. Mr. Viscotti, I'm well aware of the time. Mrs. Simacoli, just please wrap it up.
Yeah, I will. You know, you know, as trustees, you know, we want to be fair. You know, we want to be fair to the institution. We want to be fair to the staff. We want to be fair to our patients, and we want to be fair to our future patients. And we want to be fair to you, the taxpayers. You know, what we're asking for here, we're not there yet. Have we made progress? Surely, we have. We just need more time to continue to make progress while at the same time, looking for other alternatives. I thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other vote to care to be heard?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, Mike Viscotti, town meeting member, precinct eight. Mr. Moderator, I move to pass over this article.
Motion's been made in the second to pass over the article. This is a, well, the main motion in this case. So, this is a subsidiary motion. It is akin to a motion for indefinite postponement. It would, if it passes, it would suppress the motion or the article for the session. It is debatable. Does any vote to care to be heard on the motion to pass over? Mr. Viscotti.
Mr. Moderator, thank you. Once again, ladies and gentlemen, Mike Viscotti, town meeting member, precinct eight. Ladies and gentlemen, admittedly, I, math is not my strong point, but a few, a few articles ago, some of you voiced concern that you did not have time to research and, before voting on a particular article. If anybody out there has a true understanding of all those numbers that are before you on that handout, then more power to you. But I don't thi, I certainly did not have enough time to analyze those numbers, and I would like to review those numbers, compare them to the numbers of other similar facilities in the state, before I vote on millions of dollars. And, and I think as town meeting members, you would also like time to research this. Please vote yes to pass over this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Viscotti. Anybody, any other vote to care to be heard on the motion to pass over the article?
David Levine, precinct one, Fink County meeting. Remember, I just want to remind everybody that our meetings are open, open to the public, both our subcommittees and our finance committee meetings. So, all of you have the opportunity to listen and see what we discussed about this vote. So, I encourage you not to pass it over. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other vote to care to be heard on the motion to pass over? Okay. If not, we'll have a vote. Bringing up the slide now. Okay. Members participating remotely may now vote on the motion to pass over the article. Yes, if you're in favor of moving, excuse me, passing over the article, and vote no if you are opposed to passing over the article. All those in favor of passing over the article, if you're in favor, please manifest by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, no? No. The motion to pass over is defeated. Now, we'll continue on discussion on the main motion, which is to fund the geriatric authority amount of twenty-five-hundred, two-point-five million. Any other vote to care to be heard?
Al Correa, three L.A., precinct five. Taking a different tact, I'm not here to ask you to vote yea or nay on this, regardless of my personal feelings. This is too important of an article. I'm going to beg you all to ask yourselves one question before you vote. What is it worth to have a high-grade geriatric authority in Milford? I am biased, and I want you to know. My mother, my sainted mother spent the last few months of her life at Countryside. I can't put a price on what it was like to be able to come home every night and drive a whole mile. And if you lived on the other side of Milford, three whole miles to see my mother. You know, I saw some snickering when Mr. Consigli brought up the fact that somebody may have to drive seventy-five minutes. That's reality. Many of my friends, to see their mother, their father, or grandparents, have to drive half-hour, forty minutes away. It's just not practical for young families with kids. I mean, anybody who has kids and has an hour and a half free every night, God bless them, they did better than I did. I have a hard time talking against a facility that we've already invested eighteen million dollars. The borrowing was eleven million, but Zach knows better about the payback scheme, but we have to pay back sixteen. Two meetings ago, we put a million extra in to try and give them a bump. Last meeting, put another million in. So, we're at eighteen million right now. It's going to be twenty million if this goes through. That's substantial. And make no mistake, that's on our dime. But on the other hand, what is it worth if you have to send your family to go to a top-notch geriatric center? I'm not talking against any of the others, because I don't know that many, but I know Countryside, and I know what they did. Now, on the other hand, I have to respect the fact that when people say, "Well, we've got plenty of money in Milford. We always have surpluses." You've got to be careful, because we have five, six million dollars of excess levy capacity. That money's not free. It's like having your credit limit on your credit card. Citibank says you can spend up to ten thousand dollars a month. As long as you don't spend it, it doesn't hurt you. The minute you tap it, you start paying. So, we have to be careful. If we fund two-and-a-half million dollars, it's two-hundred bucks on the average taxpayer of Milford. It's eighty dollars a million. So, if you're paying six thousand a year in taxes, it's going to go to sixty-two-hundred-ish. If you're paying more, it goes up more. Is it worth it? Only you can answer that. When you look and you think about, what is it worth to us? Everything that has value has a price. Countryside has a price. When I hear, and I have to respect people that say they're just barely making it, the economy's really hurt them, so adding two-hundred or more dollars to their tax bill could hurt. I have to respect the people that say half our school, half the families in our high school are on free lunch programs. That means they're living on thirty-four thousand dollars a year, a family of four. Two-hundred bucks is a lot of money to them. People who built Milford, and I've said this before, are living on Social Security. Two-hundred, three-hundred dollars, it's a lot of money to them. So, again, I'm not going to tell you which way to vote. I've already told you, I'm biased, because I've seen what happens. But on the other hand, ask yourself the question in your heart, how much is it worth to have a top-notch facility? And at the end, I have to respect the people that say only half the people at Countryside are Milford. So, we're given two-and-a-half million, a million-plus of that goes to other towns. And that's hard. But on the other hand, we couldn't do it without them. If you cut the population in half, we couldn't survive. So, that's kind of a red herring. If we could fill it with Milford, I'd be all for it. So, again, I won't try and ask you to vote yes or no, but think real hard about, is it worth two, three hundred from now on? Because...
Okay, Mr. Correa, you'll have to wrap it up. Thank you.
I'm done. I admire what they've done, but I'm not so covered with rose-colored glasses.
Mr. Correa, come on. Any other vote to care to be heard?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, Chris Martin, precinct five. I'm going to tug on a different thing than hurt your heartstrings. I'm going to tug on your purse. This needs to happen. The members of the Milford Geriatric Authority are our residents. We are responsible for them. We have taken them into our care. We have decided that these are the people that we're going to take care of. They're our responsibility. You take on a car loan, you take on a mortgage, and I, you know what? And people can look at me, and they can be like, "Chris Martin, you're a cold person." I'm sorry, we took these people on and said, "We're going to take care of these people." And we need to. We have the residents of the Milford Geriatric Authority that we need to take care of. These funds enable us to be able to take care of them until something happens, whether it's a sale, whether it's a renovation, whether it's of an expansion, whether it's whatever. The residents of Milford, and all of you are included, we took those people in there, and we said, "We'll take care of you." And all of us did that. These people need to be taken care of. Do we transfer them someplace else? Maybe. Maybe they're seventy-five miles away. Maybe we need to visit them, and it takes us an hour to get there. But for right now, we need to take care of them. This amendment allows us to take care of these people while they're there. Am I in favor of doing something different, figuring out something different? Maybe. But in the meantime, I thought the last amendment was a no-brainer, but to me, this one is. We need to take care of the people that we obligated ourselves by indenturing ourselves on a geriatric authority. We did that. We have people there that we need to take care of. This amendment allows us to take care of them. It allows us to continue to give the care to the people that... I'm sounding like Al Correa here. That grew this town. I cannot strengthen enough that you need to approve this article. Thank you.
Any other vote to care to be heard? Mr. Rhodes. We'll get to Mr. Mazakelli next, and I think there's another voter in precinct two in the back. the back. Mr. Rhodes?
So here I have the obligation to speak against David Consigli, my friend, Chris Moore, whom I've known for many, many years, Bill Sir McCauley, we've been through battles together, and Al Correa, who I've been in front of so many times. Let's just review. This town signed a municipal bond of 11 million dollars that we are on the obligation to pay back. Not just the 200 to fund this, but 11 million that we are going to have to pay back. On top of that is a mandatory 5 million dollars worth of interest that we are going to have to pay back. We've already loaned, or not loaned, given 2 million dollars from the taxpayers. Now, that's 18. Now we're asking for 2.5 million dollars. And everyone is right in this room that these are our people, and we should care for them. And Alex asked exactly the right question, what's it worth? So he left out one thing, though. Is it just this 2.5 million dollars? Or are we going to be back here next year for another 2.5 million dollars, given all the issues that Mr. Consigli and Mr. Sir McCauley explained? Are we going to be back here two years? And then are we going to be back here a year and a half, two years from then? They've shown us no pathway to cash flow positive. So I'd all be in favor of this, of giving this money, if we could see the light at the end of the tunnel. But it is just plainly not fair to the taxpayers, who just don't have family members in Countryside, to have to keep spending more and more of our property tax to support this. So as you consider the value to the Countryside members, please, please, give consideration to taxpayers and what we have got to go through. Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Mr. Mazakelli.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members. I believe what the trustees have been mentioning, too, throughout the evening, was that there is a lot of improvements that are being made since the last time that we spoke to them during the pandemic. And what Mr. Rhodes was mentioning, too, you know, is this going to happen year after year after year? I think what we're doing and listening to what the trustees have been mentioning, that they have been improving, and let's see if they can keep improving by helping them out for this year alone. Again, and like David and Philip mentioned, too, they did very good presentations and very good information, and I thank you for that, that this situation is not just unique to the town of Milford, like they were mentioning before, because of staffing shortages, high costs, lack of rehab participation, and low reimbursements from various insurance agencies, that, you know, it's not only this facility, but nationwide. However, Countryside appears to be consistently improving since the setbacks during the pandemic. More importantly, but just look around our town, ladies and gentlemen, the town of Milford, and know that many before us created the reasons why some of us moved here in the first place, and why many of us that were raised here are still here. It is that generation that now calls Milford Countryside their home. It is now our turn to show some responsibility to them, like they have done to us. Let's not forget the human side of this dilemma. Regardless of their health and ability to function, these residents face serious consequences when their routines are upended by closure and trying to find a suitable facility. When progress is being made financially, as it is in this case, and it is continuing for the past few years, perhaps we can give the residents and staff a little more support and time to see if more improvements are made to prevent any disruption to residents and staff. Let's do what we can to help this facility get back on its financial track, and with hope, it will still be available for our generation and for future generations. So your vote in favor of this article would be greatly appreciated. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mazakelli. Any other vote to care to be heard? Mr. Walsh.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. Mike Walsh, precinct two. I can talk about Countryside from the heart. You've heard the word tonight, compassion. You've heard the word caring. You've heard the word a staff that is second to none. I lived it. My wife did three tours of duty at Countryside Healthcare Facility. And I can tell you that there's an old saying that you can't put a value on something, and the care and the compassion at Countryside, you can't. There was many a night that I would walk out of that facility, and I was talking to myself. And one of the previous speakers said, when your family's involved, it's a very difficult, difficult thing to go through. And there was never a night that I walked out of that facility that I didn't have some kind of a look on my face, and somebody behind the desk said, you want a coffee? You want to sit down and talk? Are you okay? When we realized that my wife's time was coming to an end, she was at Milford Hospital, and the physicians came to me and they said, what do you want to do? Like I knew what I wanted to do. They said, do you want to bring her home? Do you want to leave her here? What do you want to do? And I said, let that be her decision. And I'm telling you this story because I want you to realize what a diamond we really have when it comes to, and you've heard a lot of people talk about long-term care and short-term care. I'm just going to tell you about care, about people that truly care. And I walked in, and I said to my wife, I said, well, I said, you got a choice. I said, I can bring you home, or I'll send you anywhere you want to go. And she looked right at me and said, I want to go back to Countryside. I said, really? She said, I want to go back to Countryside. In the last two days that she was here, I understood why, because of the words that we heard tonight, care, compassion, medical attention. And when I say those things, I mean all the way down to the aides. The people that simply get paid to mop the floor. And to me, they're no different than anybody else. And I would go there at night, and they'd be sitting in the room, talking to my wife. So I look at this article, and I say, as some of the previous speakers did, yeah, it's a lot of money. And I say, are we going to be back here next year? Nobody can say that. Nobody can say that. But I do agree, I do agree, on a couple of things. A, as I said earlier, it's a diamond in the rough. And B, we can't turn our backs on the people that are there right now. The good people, the hard-working people, that made not only this community and this state and this country what it is, but we have a responsibility. I ask you, please, vote in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Any other vote to care to be heard? We have Mr. Visconti, we have Mr. Rasmussen online, who wishes to be recognized. Excuse me, remotely.
Yes, this is Peter Rasmussen, precinct one. It may be called a little bit of luxury to have such a place close to home, but I think it is a cheap luxury. I think it's necessary to have such a place, because if we sell it to a pro, for-profit organization, they will have to cut down on services to make a profit. I think it's really worth to have it, and when I have my second knee replacement in January, I will look forward to being there if there's space for me at that point. I would vote for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rasmussen. Any other vote to care to be heard? Mr. Visconti.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, Mike Visconti, town meeting member from precinct eight. We've had a lot of, number of speakers up here give emotional testimony as to why we should approve this article. Well, I, too, had two family members at Countryside, which I paid for out of my pocket. I didn't come knocking on your door asking you to help me pay for my two family members, and we should not be knocking on the taxpayers' doors now to ask them to help pay for it. When my 102-year-old aunt woke up in the middle of the night with mice running all over her bed, I did not come to you and ask you to help me pay for pest control up there. We should not be asking the taxpayers now to be burdened with this, with this payment. Please vote no on this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Visconti. Any other vote to care to be heard? Mrs. Bontempo.
Evelyn Bontempo, precinct four. About two weeks ago, I did call the treasurer's office and spoke to a member of that department who was very obliging. And I asked him, what did it mean in the 2021 January town report, what, under the schedule of bond indebtedness, which a previous speaker had made reference to, what was the definition for inside debt and outside debt? And I was told the amount that the Geriatric Authority of Milford was obliged to pay. It really didn't bother me what the amount was, because I thought, in the near future, we will deal with that. Let me state that I am in favor of this town meeting approving the 2.5 million dollars. On the side of this screen, the chairman of the Geriatrics Authority, Mr. Consigli, showed you an overview. And I just will quote, you saw that vast expansion of the Countryside Healthcare Facility, and then he explained, this land for the transfer station, this was owned for, it's all town property. But I will tell you of what the founding fathers did for this town. In the spring of 1825, now 197 years ago, the town took possession of a newly purchased farm, which contained 150 acres, and an outlying woodlot of nine acres on Asylum Street. The cost was $3,500. The attribution is Aiden Ballou, A History of Milford, Worcester County, Massachusetts. We call this facility Countryside Healthcare of Milford. Not the poor farm, not the infirmary, but no longer Asylum Street. Its address is One Countryside Drive. I ask you to vote favorably for this article. Thank you.
Does any other vote to care to be heard? Okay, if not, the question comes upon the motion as presented, which is to raise a vote, town vote to raise an appropriate sum of $2,500,000, set some that's spent under the jurisdiction of the Milford Geriatric Authority for the purposes of supplementing the operating budget and expenses of said authority. Town meeting members participating remotely may now vote yes if they're in favor, no if All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
Motion is carried.
Article five.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. I move that the town vote in accordance with relevant provisions of chapter 76 of the Acts of 1982 and section 16, chapter 30 of the general laws, to authorize the Geriatric Authority of Milford to sell and assign all assets of the Geriatric Authority, including necessary real estate, to a skilled nursing facility operator or similar entity, after following all applicable provisions of the bylaws of section 30b, section 16, and to take any and all actions necessary to effectuate such transfer assignment, including actions necessary for the welfare of the patients or residents further, and proceeds received from such sale or transfer, over and above the expenses of the transactions and satisfactions of debts and obligations of the authority shall be paid over to the town of Milford for purposes of retiring any debt obligations of the town arising from borrowing of the Geriatric Authority facility or purposes.
Motion's been made and seconded. Does the Finance Committee have a... Motion's been made seconded. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorably on this article.
Thank you. The Finance Committee recommendation is favorable. Any vote okay to be heard?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Consigli.
Ladies and gentlemen, we have been working with the Sub-Finance Committee and Finance Committee ever since COVID hit. So in anticipation and being proactive, we have already started looking, dissecting, investigating, and felt that it would also be prudent to have an additional article in tonight's warrant so that we could continue to do that with your authorization so if something did change in the short term or long term, we could bring it to this body for your approval. As I indicated before, this article strictly allows the authority to continue to investigate. We've already done a lot of this work in detail. Some of it is ugly, some of it is proactive, but more importantly, it's really about the care and concern of the residents of the facility, but also bearing in mind the financial obligations the countryside has to this community and also for the payments. Please note and understand that all during this process, Countryside has not missed a single bond payment. And yes, some of those funds that have been borrowed, a lot of those funds go right back to pay the bond. So the net aspects of what we pay may be far different than what we borrow. Finance Director can certainly update Town Meeting Members on our bond status, when they expire, when some are due, I believe one is due in six or seven years maybe of one of them, and they certainly can explain that. But this article basically is to just give us additional authority, continue to research, investigate, so that we can provide you with continued knowledge as we've been trying to do and be transparent all along. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Consigli. Does any other vote okay to be heard? Mr. Thomas.
Terry Thomas, Precinct 4. I'm a little confused. Not unusual, people that know me say that. We just voted 2.5 million to support the Geriatric Authority, and now we're voting to allow them to sell the facility? Can someone explain that to me?
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Attorney Moody.
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members. Just as Mr. Consigli explained, this is being done in part at the suggestion of the Finance Committee so that the Geriatric Authority is ready to move in any direction it has to on any short-term basis and can bring things up close to a sale if that's necessary. Everybody on the Geriatric Authority and everybody in town government hopes that'll never be necessary, but a lot felt it was a good idea to have this vote done now and have it available and in our pockets so that they can move efficiently if it becomes necessary to do that. Nobody wants it to happen. So it's really that simple.
Thank you, Attorney Moody. Any other vote okay to be heard? Okay, if not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. I'll just remind the voters that pursuant to was Clause D of Section 8 of Chapter 76 of the Acts of 1982, the sale of the real or personal property of the Geriatric Authority requires a 2/3s vote. Since nobody has spoken in opposition, I will take a voice vote. If that is not unanimous, then we will poll the individual precincts. So... Side's coming up. Okay, Town Meeting Members participating remotely may now vote. Since we have a negative vote already on the... We will take a standing vote now. All those in favor will please rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. All those opposed will rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. There are people opposed. Okay. Precinct 1. Precinct 1, 6 in favor, 0 opposed. Precinct 2.
4 in favor, 5 opposed.
Precinct 2, 4 in favor, 5 opposed. Precinct 3.
Precinct 3, 9 in favor, 0 opposed.
Precinct 3, 9 in favor, 3 opposed. Precinct 4.
9 in favor, 0 opposed.
I apologize. 9 in favor, 0 opposed. Precinct 4.
Precinct 4, 10 in favor, 0 opposed.
Precinct 4, 10 in favor, 0 opposed. Precinct 5.
15 in favor, 0 opposed.
Precinct 5, 15 in favor, 0 opposed. Precinct 6.
13 in favor, 0 opposed.
Precinct 6, 13 in favor, 0 opposed. Precinct 7.
17 in favor, 2 opposed.
Precinct 7, 17 in favor, 2 opposed. Thank you, Attorney Moody. Any other vote okay to be heard? Okay, if not, the question comes pursuant to was Clause D of Section 8 of Chapter 76 of the Acts of 1982, the sale, 2/3s vote. Since nobody has spoken in opposition, I will take a voice vote. If that is not unanimous, then we will poll the individual precincts. So... Side's coming up. Okay, Town Meeting Members participating remotely may now vote. Since we have a negative vote already on the... We will take a standing vote now. All those in favor will please rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. All those opposed will rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. There are people opposed. Okay. Precinct 1.
6 in favor, 0 opposed.
Precinct 1, 6 in favor, 0 opposed. Precinct 2. 4 in favor, 5 opposed. Precinct 3.
Precinct 3, 9 in favor, 0 opposed.
Precinct 3, 9 in favor, 3 opposed. Precinct 4.
9 in favor, 0 opposed.
I apologize. 9 in favor, 0 opposed. Precinct 4.
Precinct 4, 10 in favor, 0 opposed.
Precinct 4, 10 in favor, 0 opposed. Precinct 5.
15 in favor, 0 opposed.
Precinct 5, 15 in favor, 0 opposed. Precinct 6.
13 in favor, 0 opposed.
Precinct 6, 13 in favor, 0 opposed. Precinct 7.
17 in favor, 2 opposed.
Precinct 7, 17 in favor, 2 opposed. Precinct 8.
17 in favor, 2 opposed.
Precinct 8, 7 in favor, thank you, at large.
12 in favor, 3 opposed.
At large, 12 in favor, 3 opposed. The remote is 2 in favor, 1 opposed. What are the numbers for Precinct 8 again?
17 in favor.
Okay, thank you. So 98. 98 having voted in the affirmative, 13 opposed. The necessary 2/3s has been acquired, and the motion has passed. Article 6. Motion's been made and seconded that we pass over Articles... Any vote okay to be heard on the motion to pass over? If not, the question comes upon the motion to pass over. Town Meeting Members participating remotely may now vote yes if they're in favor of passing over and no if they're opposed. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article 7.
Mr. Moderator, move to pass over?
Motion's been made seconded to pass over. Article 7. It's an attempt, again, to take no action on the article as inserted in the warrant. It is debatable. Any vote okay to be heard on the motion to pass over? If not, the question comes upon the motion to pass over. Town Meeting Members participating remotely may now vote yes if you are in favor of passing over and no if you are opposed. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article 8.
Mr. Moderator, move to pass over?
Motion's been made seconded to pass over. Article 8. Again, it's an attempt to take no action on an article inserted in the warrant. It is debatable. Any vote okay to be heard on the motion to pass over? Pass over. Town Meeting Members participating remotely, all those opposed, no. The motion is carried. Article 9.
Mr. Moderator, move to pass over?
Motion's been made seconded to pass over. Article 9. Again, it's an attempt to take no action on an article as inserted in the warrant. It is debatable. Any vote okay to be heard on the motion to pass over? If not, the question comes upon the motion to pass over Article 9. Town Meeting Members participating remotely may now vote yes if you are in favor of passing over and no if you are opposed. The motion is carried unanimously. What's the pleasure of the meeting, Mr. Fields? Motion's been made seconded to dissolve the warrant. It is not debatable. All those in favor who are participating remotely may vote yes if you are in favor of dissolving the warrant. The warrant is dissolved. Will the monitors please bring up their second attendance lists? Thank you.